Okay, good evening San Bernardino. I'm so excited for tonight. We will be covering the agenda for this coming up Wednesday. And what's really great is it is not a super long agenda, but I think there's some really good information that we're going to want to cover. And so I will go over that with you. I'm going to give it a couple of minutes as always to make sure people jump on. I know, let me make sure I get my phone as you get yours. Any type of notifications, people want to know when we're live. I just got my update to show that we are live. So here we go. Okay, if you have any questions, comments, or concerns as through the agenda, you know, please don't hesitate to ask live in the feed. And then if you have anything afterwards, which I really appreciated seeing some other videos where people have been continuing. Super appreciated. What would be super great is if you guys can share this out. The more people that are able to see what's coming up on the agendas, what we're discussing in the city, the more that we know. And really, this platform for me at this is to make sure that we engage, educate, and empower the city of San Bernardino, and that's the best way to effectuate change. So hi Paula, you're on there and I see a people, a couple more people are jumping in. So before I get started in, I want to just kind of clear the platform for how we're going to do this. I want to go through, hi Thomas, I want to go through each of the agenda. Team, so not big. What I want to do is is show you guys what it is. And then some people have asked like, what do you think? What do you think? The the real purpose of the agenda for for myself is not swayed left or right, up or down on on how I feel. But because you guys believe it's important for me to share my feelings on it, I'm happy to do that as well. But if you agree or disagree, or you know, don't care, that is completely up to you. I hope you know, one way or another, and and some things do affect, some things don't. That you, you know, as Cescata taught us, you know, listen to your heart. So without further ado, I am going to jump in and we will look at the agenda. Here we go. Okay. So the agenda is for this Wednesday, February. Yes, we will have closed session that begins at five thirty P M. An open session that starts at seven P M. Okay. Make sure everybody catches up. So we are good. Okay, so here we go. If you have any comments on this, you can sign up early online. Let let me cover that real quick. So people are asking about public. Public comments are available either in person, or you can zoom them in in and request for the zoom link early. If you have a a disability that is recognized under the ADA, the American Liberties Act, you can write in a public comment and the city clerk will read it on your behalf. So there's multiple ways for you to participate in all of this. This and you can do that for open and closed session. So when you see five thirty, there's a closed session, public comment. You are to submit your comment in regards to these three things. So the first matter is existing litigation. F D, a minor individually and by through his legal guardian. Adlitan Fernando Diaz versus City of San Bernardino. Welcome, even though, and this is how, you know, we mysteriously have all this information. Even though you do not know what this case is, you can always go into the the District Court and look up the case numbers. They'll be able to provide you a little more information. You may have to pay for depending on what the case is recognized as, but you can find out what this is about. They also have anticipated litigation, significant exposure. And the possibility of litigation. So that's what they're going to be discussing. If you have any pertinent information or something you know, you're more than welcome to go and talk about it. At seven P M. They will come back into open session. We'll do the pledge of allegiance. They'll report out whatever may report out from closed session. And then public comments. This is your opportunity to talk about anything on the agenda or not on the agenda, depending on whatever place you are in in that moment. The city manager will provide an update and the mayor and council will give their update. Sitting on whatever they're doing. So this is interesting because this is actually backwards from how we have normally seen our agendas. And the consent is going to be placed first. The consent calendars in general are non controversial items that you wouldn't in are like, hey, you know, no, no thought, we need to get this kind of done. So what we know historically in going through our agendas is that that is not always the case. That the consent calendar has been an area of hiding information. And being able to like, just kind of sweep it past the coun- the council and the public. Now with the new city manager, Charles McNeely, I have every confidence in the world that he is not trying to sweep anything past us. But what I do have an issue with is that former city manager, Robert Field still has his hands on some of these things. So I think a pertinent re-review, if anybody has any questions, don't hesitate to ask so that we can make sure we're we're going over topic. So the first number three is a professional service agreement with pet or advanced pet care. They're going to execute an agreement for procession upwards of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Okay. If you want to know what that's about, let's look about it. Let's just check it out. So what the numbers is page eleven tells me. Charles McNeely right here is has worked on this, has had his eyes on it. And it's, let's see, in September four two thousand nineteen, the mayor and city council adopted a resolution authorizing professional service agreement with advanced pet care. To provide veterinary services for animals in the shelter. The agreement was approved for one year with two single year renewals and the total contract amount not to exceed seventy five thousand dollars. July of twenty twenty one, the city entered into the First Amendment with the advanced pet care. Okay, so what this is saying is that we need to expect extend the contract that we are providing veterinary services contractually. And because of the influx, as you look down on this the shelter has taken on more pets than previously estimated, and now they need to expand the contract. I could totally live with that and I approve. So as that matters, go for it. I'm good. Agreement with Horizon's Construction Company International for asphalt maintenance and street segment repair services. So they are going to I think work on the streets. That's going with this. They are going to execute this agreement and amend the general fund operating budget in amount of four hundred and fifty thousand dollars to for So if you've been asking what's going on with the streets, well, Horizon Construction Company is coming that way. So awesome. They're going to approve commercial and payroll dis- disbursements. This is how everybody gets paid every two weeks. This is totally normal and good to see. No, Charles McNeely had just left before every we were, we weren't sure at what point employees would be getting paid during the midst of bankruptcy. So this is why watching the city flush with money has been so vital to how we're moving. Adopt ordinance N C C sixteen oh five, amending section three oh four of the municipal code. If my memory serves me correct, I believe this is the procurement shift on how or or I'm sorry, not procurement, purchasing shift in the municipal code. So let's check that out. Page two forty. It is recommended, last two years, the finance department has been working to build a robust responsive purchasing division. Okay, so at we had talked about this in the last agenda review. The actions are for for purchasing, for oversight, signing authorities. So this is coming back. The council did their own recommendations. So I'm not sure if this will be pulled or not, given that there were specific. I don't know. I think I again, and this is my own personal belief, that if you are to look at the budget, talk about the budget, that it should definitely be a discussion item. I don't think this is a consent calendar item, but that's just my own personal opinion. Hi Sophia, hi Ron. You guys for joining. So i- if you want to get more in depth, let's see, purchases between fifty thousand and one dollars and a hundred thousand dollars may only be authorized by the city manager or their designee. Again, I am not super fond of that number. Keep an eye on that. I'm I'm going to. Let me go to page three. Let's see, we've got technical correction to the fiscal year. So they adopted a resolution and they need to make sure that they include the salary increases for their forensic specialists and the community service officer. So whatever they presented last time, it was fully sufficient and transparent, not in a bad way, but just in a way to show that these were going to be increased salaries and then amend the citywide salary schedule for full time partner, time temporary and seasonal. So anytime there is a shift in salaries, it'll come here. Normally controversial, but they are creating a lot of positions, some of which I'm not so sure, I think, are the most advantageous. And but we'll get to that. Talk about something. Technical, oh, we did that one memorandum of understanding for the city of San Bernardino and the management association. So as we know, and and we're going to have fun with this topic as well. Our city council and manager negotiates with our police department, the P O A, the San Bernardino and the Police Management Association, which are two different associations. So they have come to an agreement. And we're going to look at that agreement. What do they, what do they agree to? So they have the Myers Millis Brown Act, so the M M B A. And it requires the city to meet and confer in good faith, absolutely, with its bargaining groups in all matters relating to employment. Yeah, the current adopted compensation and benefits plans defines the wages and benefits of those employees. So the M O U, right? In the M O U, if adopted, describes additional points of understanding and details each party's roles to employer employee patient matters, grievances, investigation rights, fringe benefits, working conditions, general provisions. So let's see, here we go. This is going to be good for five years. Well, it was between twenty twenty and twenty twenty five, so we still got a couple more years on it. A detailed understanding of what their contract states and what they're obligated to do needed to do. Who's in control, not in control, all this stuff. M O Us are extremely important. One, because there's anything happens, the police officers are not allowed to strike, management's not allowed to strike. But as we all know, there you have that provision for the blue flu. Payroll actions. This is their their way of operating within the scope of of their rights as a person in the city. So if you so need, please read, because M O Us are very interesting beasts. And we have very aggressive, highly political off unions in in our city, and especially with our police officer unions. Something that which I find in talk about this. So here's a conundrum always that in the midst of their own financial benefit in in context of what they do, they also provide through their PAC thousands of dollars to our own political, our own political elected officials negotiate their contracts. So you're literally paid by these people to get elected, to then sit and negotiate in good faith on what their salaries and benefits and and future responsibilities are. For me personally, that that's just, I don't think it's beneficial either way. I don't think it's good. Especially in these last couple of election cycles. The P and the and and the P M A have really lost badly for who they've funded. So just a point to bring out. Let's see. So they've got their stuff, agreement with the county of San Bernardino for access to the sheriff's department automated system. This sounds good to me. I think the the further that we expand, the better availability we have in policing services at construction agreement award. So they're Harris Hill Senior Center. Fantastic. Our seniors are super important. And and look, we've had a lot of deferred maintenance. I think this is, this is awesome to see. We have a lot of park improvements coming just in general over an allocation. I think eighteen million dollars alone has been allocated to the park in the sixth ward, which is awesome. We have a cooperative agreement with the county of San Bernardino for Arrowhead Farm Street Rehabilitation. So this is great. I live in this area, which makes me pretty excited because our the streets kind of suck up here. And not that close to the to to the golf course. So if I know people are like, oh, you guys were paved over there. We're about a mile away. In this agreement, the county of San Bernardino and the city have like wonky streets that they're responsible for. And and they're come to an agreement and and the sixth ward does this, the third wards does this, any ward that bumps up to another jurisdiction. They're going to put together a a funding co-op to to pave these streets in conjunction with each other. Super excited. I I approve. I totally approve. Establish a no parking anytime restriction on both sides of the median along Windsor Drive between Gilbert and Baseline. In word two, let's check that out. That sounds pretty pretty awesome. So we're going to go to page four eighteen. Oops. I don't see. Maybe there'll be a map. Let's see a map. Windsor Drive between Gilbert and Baseline Street is designated as a collector aerial in the city circulation plan. Windsor Drive divided road with a prima facie speed limit of twenty five miles an hour. Okay. The intersection of Windsor Drive and Baseline is signalized, is a signalized intersection that provides access to the commercial areas along Baseline Street in its easterly and westerly direction. So what I'm getting is that this is a very tight street. Fair of traffic and parking on it is not beneficial. So I can get behind that. If anybody has any questions, please let me know. Sounds like a good idea. In fact, I am a firm believer that probably more streets in our city should be anytime. But we're just kicking that off right there. We are going to, let me make sure I didn't miss anything on page four. Looks like it's coming, a bunch of them. Okay. So the city is annexing more more properties. Now here's something, and this is what I thought was interesting. I had a a friend reach out to me today who had been looking at the agenda. And what is interesting in these tax levying is that the city is responsible these annexations for these types of of maintenance upkeeps. And my understanding, and if anybody knows, please don't hesitate to reach out, that actually the cost used to be built into the price of homes, and it was up to the the developer to maintain these or to build in this type of maintenance. And I guess that has gone away. I think I want to believe similar on ranch from my understanding was another type of was to have continued maintenance. And it it always, it hasn't necessarily been been that way. So if you're in these annex territories, maybe you know, thing and you could help out. Let's see, number seventeen amendment to cooperative agreement with the San Bernardino County in a metro leak station in Santa Fe Depot. They're going to approve an amendment for the Metro Link authorized. Let's look at that. Here I think, I don't know if you guys are seeing something that I am. These are very undetailed, like, I mean, I, if if the goal is for the the public to be able to make a visual on what's coming. These are I I'm just like, I don't know what you're saying. Like, you're making me go through the heart of the agenda to figure out what is this recommendation like? I I am, is it just me? I'm going to put this out there generally. Should this be a little more detailed? In in the like, just the the basic agenda, like, this is what this means. So just put that out there. Here we go. Background, the city has a line in cooperative agreement with S B C T A to operate and maintain the the Santa Fe Depot. Okay, the operations and maintenance agreement between S B C T A and the city of San Bernardino sets forth responsibilities and obligations regarding the maintenance operations responsibilities. That's kind of redundant. Yes, okay. This agreement is considered agreements between S B C, who wrote this, and other cities that have a commuter rail station. Accept responsibility for the security and maintenance of the station within their respective jurisdictions. Okay, so this is something to do with security and maintenance. Got it. It is expected that is better suited to provide the necessary security and maintenance services for the station areas. And the is considered to be non operating property and that the cities would benefit from greater economies of scale. Okay. So what I'm reading is that the city will start handling the maintenance and security. And S B C T A will not. It says there's no fiscal and amendment further clarifies duties and responsibilities of the city of San Bernardino. Now, I'm not sure how this is not going to fiscal. Given that they will now have to provide some type of additional service. Okay. So we'll have to look into, hopefully, well, not we, but hopefully the council will look into this a little bit further and and figure out if there is or is not additional funding required for us to take over this. But I wish they would just say that, right? Like in in the the basic backup item seventeen, approve amendment, number seven for cooperative agreement to provide security and maintenance. All right, there is one discussion item for tonight. And that is a declaration for homelessness as a state of emergency. Let's look at this. We're going to go to page six forty eight. Now I did a a review of the current state of homelessness in our city. And as we know, the current mayor Helen Tran has declared that she will declare or that she will ask the council, because as a council manager, former government, to declare a state of emergency. And the recommendation that it's bringing brought forward is is recommended that the mayor and county be, you know, one, adopt a resolution declaring homelessness a state of emergency. And two, direct the city man ability to take certain administrative actions to streamline the provision of shelter to people experiencing homelessness. Great. And provider or not to prepare an ordinance adopting California Residential Code Appendix X and California Building Code Appendix O. Making amendments to the San Bernardino Municipal Code for its consideration. Okay. So the background, there's a lot of homelessness. In fact, we have seen a hundred and seventy five percent increase in homelessness between two thousand seventeen and two thousand twenty two. A point in time count for twenty twenty two, we were at thirteen hundred and fifty homeless individuals in our city. My goodness, wouldn't it have been great if they would have done something between two thousand eighteen and now, but they didn't. We're getting there. So things that we are anticipating is that COVID is or the effects of COVID in the national pandemic, or I'm sorry. Sorry, guys, hang sec. Let me make sure. It's windy, so let me make sure I'm sharing my screen again. Sorry. Services are special. Here we go. What I, sorry, let me restart over. In this last two and a half months, the city council has allocated twenty million dollars of ARBA funds, which is the American Rescue Plan Act funds, which came out of the COVID to start addressing homelessness and build in essence of roughly three hundred beds. And asking the city or could ask the city manager to do is look the municipal code in the way that it allows for people to be housed. And it really comes down to that that provision for where people are allowed to stay, where they're and what they can do and where they can be. And that that is now the plan is really the the conditional use permitting for adding additional zones, residential, commercial, general. I I wish there was more for this. But realistically, it it says they need to do more research to allow for the expansion of this homeless initiative. I feel after reading this, that even though in November for this to come forward, it feels really half cocked to me like this isn't a a thought out plan as far as long term. This is, okay, you guys were on TV and you said you're going to do something and you know, you asked for this. Here's what we can do immediately. And I, as someone who has consistently asked for years for this city to do something like this, I I just don't see it. That's that's my point of view. I don't see where we're going long term. And that is worrisome for me. It is very important and vital to the success of a state of emergency. Be able to, and we went over this, right? If you if you want to hear more about it, you can watch my last video, but it's very important to understand the nuances of where we will be. Short Short uh immediately short-term and long-term. This does not do that. To me, this feels very ceremonious. Hey, guys, declared. When I think about this, I think. Uh of Redlands declaring their state of emergency, right? Declared it, they had a hotel are ready for purchase, ready for renovation, thirty million dollars was given to. You know, within a year, they had people housed. We have already allocated twenty million dollars to a navigation center. And I don't see much more other than allowing people to open up other. Buildings for for immediate shelters that. The true issue and and look forward to building affordable housing at at some point between thirty and fifty percent of median income. Cool. Awesome, great. But what's the plan? How do we get there? That that's always, I guess, the pathway of how are we going to get from here there? And what is your funding source? Where where are we with this? I mean, Councilwoman uh. Sandra Barra has talked about tiny homes before. A hundred and forty families displaced out of the uh University of um dormitories downtown. So. I personally don't see this. And so my, as you guys wanna know what my recommendation is, I'll give to you. I I don't support it. I don't support it. And and I'll tell you why. I don't think, what I think will happen is, this is my prediction, it will get passed and people will become. Over time disappointed. They will be like, hey, you 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 declare a state of emergency, get it done, like what and and. There's nothing to get, there's nothing to move forward with, other than we. What you're going to do. So, and here's the other thing, as we look at developments with housing, with um peoples. To to move in, the most vital component to our community, in my opinion, is code enforcement. So you're going to open up and expand uh conditional uses of properties. Who's who's gonna be able to manage and oversee that? And this. Right? This is like not in my backyard. I believe this needs to be citywide. Absolutely, the the plan has to be. Numbers are too little. We can't, you know, they talk about there are about two hundred and fifty-seven beds available. We need to be able to house up to six hundred. He needs to figure out how to create six hundred beds. In addition to the two hundred and fifty-seven or roughly three hundred available. Housing available shelter for nine hundred people when we have, and I'm sure this year, we're gonna have almost two thousand. So I think our numbers and our expectations are too low. I don't see a laid-out plan. I don't s- see anybody signing on. Uh, to this. So for me, I'm not here. I'm not. I don't wanna see our council fail. I don't. I I I don't, we don't get anywhere by them failing. It's why I yell at them so much, because it's like, hey, the worse you do, the worse we do. And we are all. I'm disappointed. I'm just gonna say it. I'm I'm very disappointed in as much as we've spoken about this, as much as as we have. And myself promoted the idea of getting to this point, how underwhelming. The backup is. So. That's that's just me. You guys, sorry. Uh, if your heart's set on it, cool. I mean, it's great. It's. It's it it'll get us in the paper, it'll get us on the news, but you know what also gets us in the paper and in the news is when we fail. So, okay. Um, last but not least. Uh, let's see, what do you mean anyone not signing on to it? Good question. So not signing on to this, I wanna see. A- as far as I'm concerned in this coming to me, what are the relationships we're going to enter into with the county? What are, I want, I want to be able to to tell us, we've spoken with the state and here's what they plan on doing. We've spoken with the county, here's what they, here's the federal dollars, because a lot of people in the community. Have likened what this is to what Karen Bass did in the City of L A. We have two completely different systems. What Karen Bass can do and what Helen Tran can do, don't even. But what our council can do in relation to what Karen Bass can do are right here. And Karen Bass came with a a laid-out plan. She came at her, literally, she had the Vice President of the United States sitting right behind her, be like, hey, well, this is. We're doing this. I would like to see county supervisors, I'd like to see assembly members and and our. Senators and who whoever's going to to help San Bernardino move this. Emergency declaration forward. That's that's what I'm looking for. I I want to see a sh- uh, and I'm gonna make sure I say this right, assurability. That this isn't just pomp and circumstance. And and so that's just my my feeling on it. I hope that makes sense. For how it's in my head. Okay, so again, the will come this last one, last but not least, a recommendation is coming from council. And Theodore Sanchez to consider the repeal of the relit- Resolution twenty twenty dash two six five. Which, let's just cut what it means. This was a resolution put in place to restrict grinding on site at the Oxbow, which is located nor uh. In the fifth ward and to render within forty days its report on, so they wanna send this to the planning commission. And get a a a report. Within forty days on crushing restrictions of unfinished materials within a thousand feet of residential zone property. Now, here's what gets me. I'm going to assume Teddy Sanchez does not even follow our city's planning commission. Because as you guys know, the planning commission has had. Meetings over the course of this this year and last year concurrently, and they. Worked to write an out. Ending. Amendment to the municipal code. And even though they were, they looked at every angle, every possibility, all the all the environmentals, what they ended up co- concluding. In January of this year, just two a week, two weeks ago now, was that it wouldn't matter what type of code you have in place. The effects of grinding on site and releasing silica dust into the air. Which is the the particle dust of cement is so environmentally dangerous and such a health hazard. That you not do it safely. And assure the public. And so they unanimously agreed to continue the restriction throughout. Now, let's be. City has never allowed anybody to grind on site. We just caught a contractor illegally grinding in our city. Silica dust flying all over. And. And the only benefit. Of grinding is to the contractor monetarily, the only ones who benefit from it. And I already can already hear, and we need to think about future development. No. Theodore Sanchez is the first person to stand up and tout this four hundred million dollar uh planning. You know, people have been pulling permits and the amount of monetary investment has come into the city. Yeah, absolutely, it has, great. And none of it has been contingent upon their allowance to grind on site. Nobody has not purchased something. Because they had to tear down a building and haul concrete out. We'll get there when we get there as far as how I feel about this, but um this is supposed to come back now. For those who do know the planning commission at the. Our next meeting will be creating their referral to the city council uh about why they want to restrict. Continue to restrict grinding in our city. So this will be interesting. This is, I I just, I'm like, why do you have planning commissioners if you don't talk to them? Makes no sense. Okay. Agenda, it's only eighteen real items and. I hope you can make it Wednesday night at. Seven P M for. Open session. If you have any comments on that, if you have any comments on anything else going on in your life, please, you know, don't. Tell the council, this is our time as a community where we get to, you know, vocalize our needs. So. Have a great night. I have a very, very great and safe week. And if you have any questions, please um put it in the chat and I will talk to you guys later. Good night.